Okay, good afternoon, everyone. It's barely, almost evening, but still afternoon. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Andrew Greyston. I'm the manager of policy and programs in the corporate asterisks in Strategic Planning Division of the Public Works Department. I'm here today to give you a presentation on the civic gateway study. Before we get into all the details, I'd like to go over a little bit of an outline of what we're going to talk about today. Start off with the previous council direction, take a look at the history of the civic gateway program, look at the public consultation process that was undertaken in 2008, talk about some of the specific locations as well as site challenges, and finally wrap it up with our strategy, financials, and our timeline. So why are we here today? So in September of 2013, GIC heard a presentation from Ms. Laura Babcock regarding gateway programs, and that presentation highlighted existing gateway programs in other municipalities throughout Ontario. After receiving that presentation, committee made the following motion, and in short recommends or direct staff to report back with short and long-term plans to address entrance and/or gateway signage in an effort to improve the branding and promotion of the city of Hamilton. A little bit of history about what's gone on with civic gateways. It's been something that's been ongoing for quite a while, initiated shortly after, the initial concept started shortly after amalgamation. So the city of Hamilton's Planning and Economic Development Department completed studies between 2001 and 2008 to examine the importance of gateway features focusing on site identification, design options, as well as an implementation strategy. In 2008, four gateway designs were proposed by urban design staff at five locations throughout the city. This process included a fairly comprehensive public engagement process consisting of public information centers, the city's website, as well as making them available to municipal service centers. I would like to talk a little bit, because it's been quite some time, about the designs that were brought forward for public input. We'll highlight just very quickly some of the characteristics. So Design Option 1 adopts the current corporate city brand as a basis for the design, consists of the city's large freestanding H logo and the city of Hamilton in the approved text. The background landscape is coniferous vegetation that will unite the two elements. Design Option 2, shown below, seeks to recall the historic TB McQuestion High Level Bridge, a very prominent and recognizable landmark in the city of Hamilton. In fact, so recognizable that this was very key in the development of the city of Hamilton logo, and you can quite clearly see the two similarities between our logo on the top and the bridge below. The design of this particular gateway consisted of two walls, a lower wall on the front highlighting the bridge with a larger wall on the background displaying the city of Hamilton wording. Design Option 3 looked to celebrate and recognize the city's proud industrial heritage while presenting contemporary forward look. The sign would be constructed on a pedestal with a backdrop of weathering steel that would provide visual appeal and interest. Again, coniferous vegetation frames the gateway to provide further visual appeal. There are quite a few similarities you can see between Design Option 3 and Design Option 4, in that the lettering, same size, same font, and on the same pedestal. However, Design Option 4 looked to recognize the diversity of the city's unique landscapes. And by doing so, or in effort to do so, they could change the background to suit different landscapes. The image you see here on the screen is a collection of deciduous trees, but other backdrops that were discussed included sumac as well as some wild grasses. Oops, sorry. Head of myself. So as mentioned, the process contained a very comprehensive public engagement process, and the four gateway concepts were presented at public information centers, as well as made available on the city of Hamilton's website and available above municipal service centers. Residents were able to comment as well as vote on their preferred option, and over the course of four weeks in June and July of 2008, 91 voters came out in total, and Design Option 4 was voted as the preferred concept, receiving 28 out of the 91 votes, or approximately 30 percent. As well as design options, the site also, or the study also looked at locations. So gateway features are typically located at major entrance points to the city to promote and identify and brand that particular city. Hamilton's a little bit unique in that it's accessible for multiple highways, being the 403, the QEW, as well as Highway 6. And therefore, the 2008 study identified the five locations for, five feasible locations for gateways that you see in front of you. Location 1 on the Highway 403 near Highway 6 interchange. Location 2 on Highway 6 near Fruilton, capturing people coming off 401 down Highway 6 into the city of Hamilton. Location 3 on the 403 near Albertson Road. Location 4 on the QEW near 50 Road. And finally, Location 5, which is on the QEW near the Red Hill Valley Parkway or Centennial Parkway, and that kind of serves as more of a centralized gateway. I would like to talk a little bit more detail about each particular site, some of the challenges about each site, as well as some of the positives. Start off with Site 1, which is the site located on Highway 403 near the Highway 6 interchange. And some of the site-specific challenges here are that the landscapes contain undulating slopes that will require significant fill removal, grading, as well as potential slope stabilization. Secondly, it's located in the Ministry of Transportation right-of-way, and therefore we require an encroachment agreement. Access to the site is a significant challenge. The site is not accessible from municipal roadway or highway, and therefore, the only point of access is from the MTO right-of-way. This creates significant construction challenges, as access being limited to the right-of-way may result in temporary lane closures or off-hours work. This is, we can overcome this challenge, but it comes with an increased cost for construction. There are some positives associated with this site, but I'm going to talk about those when we get to our short-term strategy. Site 2 is identified on Highway 6 near Fruilton, and the 2008 study identified labeling the Fruilton Water Tower as a viable option. Staff noted some concerns with this strategy, one being that the water tower is located approximately 400 meters from Highway 6 and isn't always clearly visible. It is marked on your, on the drawing there, so you can see the separation between Highway 6 and the Fruilton Water Tower. Secondly, it's not consistent with the other gateway features that were proposed, those being your more traditional landscape gateway features that you see. And finally, other water towers in Flamborough, it's not consistent with the nomenclature. The most recently constructed water tower in Flamborough, or in Waterdown, it was branded with the Waterdown logo. So again, a lack of consistency. So recognizing these challenges, staff looked for alternative options, and we did identify a small parcel of city-owned land near Highway 6 and Fruilton Road identified on the picture in front of you. This requires further site evaluation, and if it is not a feasible site, we would be required to move again into the MTO right-of-way, requiring an encroachment agreement. Secondly, the site experiences low average annual daily traffic flow based on our MTO statistics. And finally, it's a minimal distance from the road to the existing tree line, limiting visibility and setbacks for a gateway feature. Site 3 was identified on 403 near Albertson Road. Again, the site would be located in the MTO right-of-way, and similar to the Highway 6 location, experiences a relatively low volume of traffic, the lowest of any of the 400 series highways coming into the Hamilton area. On a positive note, site lines at this site are clearly visible due to the flat landscaping. There is a slight slope at the bridge embankment, which provides a perfect opportunity for the installation of a gateway. And probably most importantly, the site can be accessed from Albertson Road, which is a city-owned road, making construction as well as maintenance activity much simpler. Site 4 was identified on the QEW at 50 Road. This presents a few interesting challenges. Again, located in the MTO right-of-way, requiring an encroachment agreement. But more importantly, MTO policy stipulates only one gateway feature per highway per direction. Therefore, to install a civic sign, or civic gateway at the Hamilton, at 50 Road would require the removal of the Stony Creek sign or an MTO exemption from the approved policy. And we do understand that this is a very sensitive challenge with this site. On a positive note, construction and maintenance access is available from the on-ramp or the off-ramp, so again, not a city-owned road, but it wouldn't require lane closures. The existing topography would require minimal excavation. It experiences a very high traffic flow, and it would capture all traffic on the corridor between Hamilton heading to popular tourist destination Niagara Falls as well as the United States. So it is a very well-used stretch of highway. Site 5 was identified on the QEW near the Red Hill Valley Parkway or the Centennial Parkway. And in April of 2007, council approved the construction of the QEW pedestrian bridge, recognizing the potential for linking hundreds of kilometers of trail in southern Ontario. Construction began in 2008 and was completed in 2010. The lighting and graceful design elements incorporated into the bridge are consistent with the vision of a gateway in this location, and therefore, staff, through previous staff reports, this location has been identified to be complete. Identified to be complete as a gateway. This serves as a gateway at this location. So what are we recommending as our strategy? So staff are recommending focusing on a single gateway at Highway 403 and 6, again, that is subject to MTO approval. MTO approval is granted through an application process consisting of many requirements, some of which include aerial photographs, a proper traffic control plan as per Ontario Traffic Book 7, site plans, draining plans, grading plans, as well as detailed site and landscaping drawings. So a fairly comprehensive package. The total cost associated with fabrication, construction, and installation and design is $230,000. That comprises of $30,000 of soft costs for design as well as application, $170,000 for fabrication installation, and carrying a 15 percent contingency totaling $230,000. Staff were recommending that $40,000 from the existing PED account for the gateway program in 2008 be used to whip fund parts of the program, and the remaining $190,000 be recommended from the council's strategic capital project reserves. You may be asking yourself, given all the site challenges with Highway 403 and 6, why are we trying to focus our efforts there? First of all, the proposed location offers an excellent vantage point of the highway. It's a beautiful entrance to the city. Just beyond the gateway, you enter one of Ontario's most beautiful natural elements in Coutts Paradise. I'm not just saying that because I'm the city's rep on the Coutts to Escarpement Committee. It is a beautiful location. Secondly, it experiences a very high traffic volume, in fact, the highest in the city of Hamilton on any of the 400 series highway, and therefore, would be viewed by the most eyes. And finally, it's on the official Pan Am route, and therefore, it is anticipated that most Pan Am traffic will pass this gateway, clearly promoting and branding the city for the Pan Am Games. For a long-term strategy, staff are recommending that civic gateways be installed or investigated at the remaining three sites, Highway 6 near Fruilton Road, Highway 403 near Albertson Road, and the QEW near 50 Road, but those be brought forward to future budget deliberation processes in 2016. This will allow staff to focus on installing one gateway prior to Pan Am Games, learn from any lessons, or learn from our mistakes, and implement a sound strategy for the long In developing the proposed strategy, staff have focused on site reviews, analyzed traffic flows, and had preliminary discussions with the MTO. Staff also met with the Stony Creek councillors to discuss the MTO policies and the implications at the QEW and 50 Road site. In order to suit the landscapes at 403 and Highway 6, staff have refined the design concepts lately. Refinements include a cantilevered design in place of a continuous foundation to suit the existing landscape, as well as coniferous vegetation to provide a year-round backdrop that would complement and highlight the gateway feature. Staff do value public engagement and the process that was completed in 2008, and therefore, as the design has been refined, staff will make it available for public comment on the city of Hamilton website. I'd like to wrap up with just our proposed timeline. So should we move forward, staff would like to initiate the web-based public consultation in June before the summer months to get as many people participating as we can. Pending council approval, we would initiate the detailed design instantaneously, with hopes of submitting an application to the MTO in July. Procurement would start upon approval from MTO beginning in early 2015, with site works wrapping up prior to Pan Am Games. The staff do understand that athletes as well as visitors will be coming to the city prior to Pan Am Games, so we will make every effort to expedite all processes that are within our control. I would like to point out one element that's not within our control entirely, and is definitely on the critical path, and I'm sure you've seen on here, the MTO application and approval process scheduled for approximately eight months. We do not have complete control over this, but what staff can do is ensure we submit a very comprehensive design package, hopefully avoid the back and forth between ourselves and the ministry to receive a speedy approval. I just wanted to leave you with a vision, a small, or very simple rendering of what the proposed gateway feature may look like at the 403 and Highway 6 location. And I'd be happy to try and answer any questions that you have.
I have a speaker's list. I got councillor Marula, councillor Ferguson, councillor Collins.
Actually, Madam Chair, I just wanted to speak at the end and speak on the affordability issue and the deferral to the budget process.
Okay councillor, so I'll go to councillor Ferguson. Thank you.
Thanks, Andrew. So you're saying that the preferred option's Option 4, is it?
It was. As per the public consultation process, Option 4 was the preferred alternative.
The difference between 1 and 4 is 1 has a logo and 4 doesn't, is it?
I'm sorry, could you?
The difference between 1 and 4 is 1 has the logo on it and 4 doesn't? Looking at the handout.
They are similar. In Option 1, they're using the corporate brand as well as different lettering, and again, the vegetation would differ. In the public consultation process for Option 1, they were recommending coniferous vegetation, and in Option 4, they were recommending differing the vegetation depending upon the site.
Yeah, I'm indifferent to vegetation. Just, it seems interesting they took the logo out, which is sort of a linkage to everything else we have in the city. So how did Option 1 rate in the polling? Because it wasn't a very big poll, is it?
Well, sorry?
It was 90 people.
It was a fairly, I mean, it was a fairly comprehensive public consultation process, but there was only 91 votes. If you go back, this was 2008, and I think we've seen a very big increase in public participation since that time. Some of the more recent projects that have come forward, you do see a greater public participation. So the voting breakdown was as follows, I'll do them in percentages. Site 1 was 23 percent, Site 2 was 21 percent, Site 3 was 3 percent, Site 4 was 30 percent, and 20 percent were voted for none of the above.
Okay. And what you're looking for today is just approval for the 1 and everything, all of the others would go to the budget deliberations then?
That is correct. We were emphasizing trying to have a gateway installed for the Pan Am Games to promote the city. The remainder would come forward to future budget processes.
And the money would come from the two reserve funds. Okay. I'm supportive of the staff recommendation, Madam Chairman, because I think we need to have this done for Pan Am Games as everybody enters. Most of them will come down the 403 out of Toronto and York Boulevard into the stadium. So at the appropriate time, I'd be happy to move the staff recommendation just for the 1.
Thank you, councillor Collins. I'll come back to you councillor. Questions then councillor Whitehead.
I'm going to make, leave it, reserve it as a comment, thank you.
Councillor Farr.
Seeing Madam Deputy Mayor that procurement is part of this deal, this is a contract job through and through, through you?
Through you, Madam Deputy Chair, that is correct.
So we're going to farm it out?
Yes, we'll go through the city's procurement process for construction and installation.
We have, I mean, we have thousands of folks, Public Works, but we have landscape architects, and we have forestry people, and it's not, we probably have some welding equipment, and God knows we can get a hold of some steel. Have we ever contemplated on a job like this, not contracting out and actually doing it in-house, and if we did, have we contemplated how much less it would cost through you?
Through the-
I knew Jerry would want to answer this.
So the, we do have all those disciplines. We don't have the expertise for a gateway sign in-house to do it. We rely on contractors. We will provide the input that was given by the public, but the actual construction, we don't have the expertise in-house to do the construction.
Steve, can you put up the gateway sign itself?
The final image, you mean?
One of the artistic renderings, preferably a simpler-looking one, but they're fairly simple. So what expertise do we lack to the GM through you, Chair? If we were to contemplate doing it in-house?
Chair, we don't have the construction capability in-house to build this type of a structure.
What, without getting into too much detail, Jerry, what do you mean? What construction capabilities are required to do what I, like that Hamilton sign? And I'm not trying to be facetious, just trying to see if we can make it work at a much less cost. I know we can bore holes, I know we can plant trees, and I know there's got to be somebody who can weld and cut with some uniform humidity, if that's a word, in a uniform way.
So through the Chair, the ability to fabricate it, design it, is not something we can do in-house. We can plant trees, yes, we do that all the time, we can assist with that, we can assist with the design, but the RFP will be for a specific discipline of contractor to design it and install it. It's, you know, it's more than just, you know, welding and cutting steel out. There's a more of a detailed process for both the, you know, the aesthetics of it as well as the making sure it lasts.
What material through you, Chair, were we planning on using? I thought I heard steel.
The details would have to be ironed out in the detailed design, but it would be a combination of concrete for a base, as well as the sign would likely be made out of steel.
And the words, the letters seem uniform in size and shape and dimension. So I'm interested in actually exploring this further. I would like, I would like to explore this further, at the very least to come back with some form of in-house estimate if we could contemplate doing this job in-house, boring the holes, planting the trees, and welding the words "Hamilton," and see what sort of price breakdown we have there as opposed to contracting it out. And at the appropriate time, I would move that staff investigate that possibility. Please.
I'll come back to you councillor. I have councillor Ferguson that will have a motion on the floor, and I'll come back to you. Councillor Whitehead?
We have engineers, right? We do very sophisticated design work in the city. We have architects. But I guess the question is, we have all the disciplines. Jerry, can you help me understand if we got all the disciplines, why we couldn't do this in-house?
So through the Chair, we have, we have our engineers that design, we have landscape architects, we do not have people who construct things in the city of Hamilton.
Okay, so we don't have any city staff constructing anything in the city of Hamilton? Is that correct?
So through the Chair, you know, this is a very, it looks like, you know, seven, eight simple letters, and the process, it's not. It's a detailed design, the estimate's 230,000 with using the expertise out there. We don't have that expertise in-house. Yes, we do build things in the city, we do have, you know, a few parks that we help put together, but this is something that is, requires expertise, and we don't have the discipline to build it, or fabricate it within the city of Hamilton.
Okay, and have we, we having entered into going to our steel partners, US Steel or Marshlar, to see if in fact they want to partner in something like this?
Through you, Madam Deputy Mayor, at this point, we have not. We were waiting for council approval to proceed.
Okay, so there might be other opportunities to reduce some of these costs?
We hadn't explored those, but at the request of committee, we can, we can explore those options.
Madam Chair, I like councillor Ferguson. When you travel across the province of Ontario, everyone has at least one gateway sign where it's mostly traveled and most visible, whether it's, you know, Burlington, Wawa, Ontario, Elliott Lake, it doesn't matter where you go. So at the very least, we do not have a gateway sign, period, in the city of Hamilton. Well, it's not really a gateway either, in the context of something even like this.
But it doesn't say Hamilton.
Yeah, fair enough. So I certainly believe that in, before the Pan Am Games, it'd be viable to at least have one high vol, you know, very visible, high-volume area gateway sign. So I certainly support that position.
Thank you. I can, I'll just relinquish the chair of the mayor, just a couple of questions, and I guess, I agree, I want to move forward, at least one, I think it's important we have that, and at the most prominent gateway that we need to address. But I am concerned that the logo wasn't incorporated, it wasn't accepted, so I don't know if maybe going forward on the future ones, we can look at something. The other question or the other issue, Andrew, you mentioned that the Red Hill, the overpath, the bridge, was taken off, so that's complete. I had suggested the possibility of looking at lettering that could be affixed to the beam below, because we can't affix anything on the structure itself because of wind velocities, I understand that. But I know that there was some conversation, possibility, it doesn't have to be now, but the possibility of some type of adhesive under, there's a beam at the bottom of that bridge, as you come in from heading west to east, that we could affix something to that identifies Hamilton. So I don't know whether I need to put a motion or just direction to staff that we can look at it, but I don't want that taken off the possibility altogether.
Through you, Madam Deputy Mayor, we can look at that as part of our long-term strategy. I do know that during the design process, as you mentioned, there was considerations given to wind loading. It's also given to rain accumulation in our unfavorable months, ice accumulation and that dropping onto the roadway. So it does present a little bit of a safety hazard, but we can reevaluate that and bring that back again as part of the long-term strategy.
Would be something affixed to it, like a deckle underneath? There would be nothing that falls on the roadway because the bridge is actually not on, over a roadway. So staff understand, I'll leave it with you on that. The other one is the current gateway feature and the issue with 50 Road is they understand the ministry will not allow another sign within the close proximity of the Stony Creek sign at Fruitland Road. And we did have meetings with the Stony Creek councillors, and we're not supportive of removing our gateway sign at the current time, correct?
We are very clear of that expectation. What staff will be hoping to do is speak with senior levels at the MTO, and hopefully we can get an exemption from that policy.
And lastly, you had there the timelines, and I'm going to ask, and hopefully now we're in the provincial election, so that may present a bit of a problem, but going through the MTO application, hopefully there's a way that they can bump this review up, recognizing that we need to get things moving along for the Pan Am, that they've encouraged us to participate in.
We would very much like that to happen, and we are engaging in conversations with them. And like I mentioned, one thing that we can do is make sure that whatever we submit to them is very comprehensive. Oftentimes, submissions go back and forth for comments. If we can submit a very comprehensive package, we may be able to avoid the back and forth and get a much speedier approval.
Excellent. Okay, thank you. I'll take the chair back, Mr. Mayor. So I'm going to turn now to councillor Ferguson, and you had a motion, and I had-
I'll move the staff recommendation, but if I can get a second to that, I'll have a comment on it.
Okay. Councillor-
Are you seconding it, Sam?
No. No, 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 I had indicated I wanted to speak.
Correct, at the end, I'm sorry. So councillor Ferguson, I'm going to hold off that. Councillor Marula, he did, he did-
But he can bring forward a motion as long as I can speak on it, that's-
Okay.
Oh, yeah. All right. I'm going to move the staff recommendation. If I get a second, I just want a brief comment on it. Second by the mayor. Just to you, Andrew, I suspect that sign, because it's three-dimensional, and because of the weight issues and the maintenance issues, it would have to be built of aluminum, not steel, would it not?
The 2008 study did not get into the details of construction. As we do our detailed design, we will evaluate all material options.
If I could just imagine the weight of that structure if it was steel, where aluminum is a third the weight, and also, it doesn't rust, so you don't have to go there painting it every three years. And so I'd expect it would be aluminum, and that is a very special skill to weld aluminum. And I don't think we have that talent in-house to do that, I would suspect. I suspect we farm that out, so just that's my only comment. But I think it's important to get this done for the Pan Am Games and leave the rest to the budget deliberations, as councillor Ferguson suggested.
Councillor Marula.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. I can't support it, and I'll explain why. The Pan Am notion just doesn't jive with me. Knowing the routes to and from Toronto, where the majority of traffic would be coming to the stadium, this sign would be entirely irrelevant. They would be taking the Skyway Bridge to Burlington Street and then making their way to the stadium. They would not be traveling to York Boulevard or Main Street and then going downtown. That's just, that just won't be happening. They'll be taking the Skyway. So it's, it's just, I'm just telling you, it's nonsensical to suggest that. So in essence, Pan Am doesn't really play a role in it. So we shouldn't be using that as an example. Secondly, when I brought forward this initiative as a motion, I never anticipated the cost to be as significant as it is. It's just beyond what I anticipated. I was suspecting anywhere from 50,000 to 100,000 maximum. I just can't rationalize or justify this type of expenditure, particularly with respect to some of the challenges that we're faced with. So in essence, along the lines of what councillor Farr has mentioned and Whitehead, if there is a way to try to mitigate the cost and bring that down to a 50,000 to 100,000 range, I have no problem with it, but to correlate it to Pan Am, I think it's, it's really a misnomer. And when you look at the actual Skyway access to the stadium, we will, we do have the pedestrian bridge, which acts as a gateway, as well as, we will be presented with a very significant lit- lit visual sign that actually won't even cost the taxpayers a penny. And that's forthcoming pretty soon, it's going to be a great announcement. So we've taken care of the gateway aspect, and the gateway aspect is important when you're dealing with a visual problem in some way. So over the years, our argument has always been that the reason why we have a perceptual problem of Hamilton is because of the visual of going up the Skyway Bridge and crossing to the border and back to Toronto. When you're taking that York cutoff towards Main Street, that is probably, this becomes more of an eyesore than anything else. That is the most visually appealing area, that's Coots Paradise area, that we have on York Boulevard. Frankly, I think it takes away from our natural beauty. That is, that is the actual most beautiful access that we have to Hamilton. And if anything, we're jeopardizing that with this particular sign. So let's not mix apples with oranges here. That particular area does not need a gateway sign. That natural beauty is the most important gateway we have. Effort should be where it remains, and that is on the Skyway with the visual, which we've dealt with with the pedestrian bridge and the forthcoming announcement of that significant sign, a $2 million one to boot, which will be forthcoming soon, which won't even cost the taxpayers a penny. So let's just take a step, put this in perspective. I know using Pan Am can be seen as a catalyst to more expenditures, even though we've already spent $150 million plus, but at the end of the day, from a fiscal standpoint, this is totally irresponsible, and I can't support it.
Okay, councillor, I'm going to turn to Mr. Davis. He had some information with regards to this location.
Just some information, the official transportation route that's been approved by Pan Am is the 403 Main Street, along Main Street into the stadium. That's been approved by Toronto 2015. So that's why the proposed site was based on just the report, but that's the official.
So on that point, Madam Deputy Mayor, no, I appreciate that, but on that point, people are going to take the, oh, okay. So on that point, it's great that you can call it an official route, but people are going to look at a map and follow their GPS, and it's going to take them to the Skyway, which is the closest route to the stadium. So, and not to mention the fact that we're taking a naturally beautiful area and sticking up a sign, which to me becomes more a visual problem than an enhancement. We need to enhance areas where we have a visual problem, not where we don't, and that is one axis we do not have an issue when it comes to a gateway visual. So I can't justify this expenditure. Thank you.
Madam Chairman, along the same lines, my concern when I read the report was certainly the cost and the process. I think we all anticipated that this, whatever came back when we asked for the report would be forwarded to future budget years. And, you know, I know the reference has been made across Ontario, there are other municipalities that have done this, but a lot of those municipalities have found corporate sponsors and service organizations and clubs to pay for them. You can't go anywhere in Northern Ontario and see a sign that doesn't have some kind of a service organization listed on the bottom who helped contribute to those signs. And so there's got to be a better way to do this. I agree that this has nothing to do with Pan Am, and I certainly understand that, you know, staff have been concentrating on the Pan Am process and what that might mean to the city. But for me, there are so many other priorities, having just gone through the budget process. And this winter was harder than most. I mean, the requests now for street repairs and sidewalk repairs after this really, really hard, harsh winter are piling up. And this is, this is a street. The money that we're proposing to spend here is, would pay for an average residential street to be redone. So I, in the grand scheme of things, as we start to prioritize our, the issues that are in front of us, this one is not at the top of my list. And I really like the fact that staff came back with a lot of information and a lot of options. I think the most prudent course of action at this point in time would be to refer to a future budget process and let the future council determine how this stacks up with all the other issues that we have on our plate.
Thank you, councillor Marula. Thank you, councillor Marula. We still have councillor Ferguson's motion on the floor. Councillor Marula. Councillor Whitehead?
I mean, I remember when Laura Babcock put it out, that, you know, Hamilton was one of the few communities that didn't have a gateway sign, and shame on us, and traveled and gave examples all across Ontario. And I'm thinking to myself, she's right. And to talk about the beautiful, to me it's spin, and I know that some councillors are better at it than others, but to suggest that coming into Hamilton, the beautiful Coots Paradise, you're absolutely right. No question about that. And what I love to see is the fact that people recognize you have arrived in Hamilton. So the, and the sign doesn't have to go at the middle of that, at that location, that's not where you're identifying.
It's proposed before you.
It's before you arrive at that particular site, which is complimentary. So basically, you get the sign, and then bang, you see this majestic beauty. So from my perspective, when little towns, and this is the funny part, I mean, and I've driven all over Northern Ontario and Southern Ontario, and they're not all, you know, whether it's Blind River with the Paul Bunyan, or whether it's Wawa with the Goose, those are not sponsored by Rotary Clubs or Service Clubs. Yes, some are. So we could look at partnerships, but there are many that are not. So let's be clear. I know because I've traveled a great extent of Ontario on a fairly regular basis. And so to me, for a community of this size and significant, and I agree with the councillors on Pan Am, this, I mean, we spent $200,000 just recently on a truck for selling at-market prices farmer's food. So from my perspective, not to have, to make an investment of $250,000 or work, look for those partnerships or a sign that would be there for a very, very long time, just doesn't make sense. It's like you could be, you know, you've got councillor Ferguson, myself, that, you know, I think we've been pretty consistent on issues of spending, but this is, this is not one of those things where you're wasting dollars. This is a branding exercise. This is about making sure that we have a sign that is reflective of this community and that states that we're proud of this community, and it lets people know they have arrived. So for one sign, I'm certainly supportive.
Mr. Mayor, would you take the chair? I just like to comment, and I will support this. I think councillor Whitehead is correct. I think we need to, if we don't do this now, we don't take this initiative for at least the Pan Am, I don't think we're ever going to take any initiatives to identify Hamilton. And I think this is a perfect opportunity. And ironically, and I go back to the presentation this morning by Mr. Abdullah Mayo with regards to civic crowdfunding. I mean, maybe this is an opportunity where something can come in, but I think we need to start the ball rolling, and we need to have something put in place. I don't believe this is going to detract from the beautiful area of Coots Paradise. I think this is going to enhance. And as said, tell people they've arrived to Hamilton, and we should be very proud of that, and I will be supporting this. So I'll take the chair back. Councillor Ferguson?
Yes, thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. And on that, you know, with the crowdfunding and potential funding out there from different corporate sponsors, perhaps whatever motion we end up putting forward, that we direct staff to start investigating that, you know, rather than letting it completely die on the vine, so to speak, we might, we might just direct staff to explore that in the interim. Thank you.
Any amendment on your motion?
We can do that.
Okay. So we have councillor Collins, well, I had councillor Collins and then councillor Farah, sorry, councillor Collins. Councillor Collins?
Madam Chairman, I didn't mean to disrespect anyone in terms of my comments. If it was considered spin, then I apologize for that. However, I do recall past debates, and I think of the good people who live on Chester and Chesley, who had to wait 10 years to get their road and their sidewalks redone. So those are the constituents that I'm thinking about as we go through this debate, for people who are waiting for infrastructure improvements, who had to wait a decade, and then issues like this come up.
Well, they're done.
And so they are done now, thankfully. The good councillor got it done after 10 years, and I congratulate him on that.
Councillor Farah?
Coming back to haunt you. I'm supportive, I'm cautiously supportive. If it doesn't pass, please come back to me. I would like to press Jerry a little further and maybe request the appropriate staff provide an open call opportunity to qualified in-house people that aren't necessarily identified at this point. There are thousands of staff, and some may have qualifications that even our GM may be unaware of. He's on top of the game, he's well-informed, he knows way more about engineering and landscaping and roads and forestry than I do, but I wouldn't mind pursuing it if this fails.
Thank you. Councillor Jackson?
Madam Deputy Mayor, if you'd, Andrew, again, the slide showing the four different types of signs, can you just take me through that again, just very quickly, please? The types, what they're made of, and the feedback that you received, please?
I can't, I'm going to have to flip back to my notes here.
Between you, Madam Chair, or Andrew, that's fine, sure.
Well, the numbers, you're saying the stats of the votes, councillor?
Well, I think you're, councillor Jackson, you were looking for the information about the particular signs.
The particular signs, yeah, please.
Sure, I'd be happy. So through you, Madam Deputy Mayor. So design option one that was presented, adopted the, designed option one that was presented, so the picture on the top there, adopted the current city corporate brand as a basis for the design, the large freestanding H, and also using the city's approved font and color for the word "Hamilton." The freestanding letters are supported on a low-lie concrete wall, and the background would be accentuated with coniferous vegetation.
And would that be wind resistant? And I'm not trying to be funny about this, but we know what happened to the Art Gallery of Hamilton sign, a brand-new sign that was installed many years ago, and it unfortunately, if I recall, wasn't wind resistant, and it was a little bit embarrassing. So forgive me for asking this.
Oh, that's absolutely valid question, Madam Deputy Mayor. That's something will be addressed during the design process to ensure that is installed or designed and installed properly.
Okay. And the next one, then?
So the second option on the lower photo there, looks to recall the historic TB McQueston High Level Bridge, a very prominent landmark in the city of Hamilton. Also mentioned the tie to development of the corporate logo. You can see the two similarities between our corporate logo and the bridge.
Is that basically, Andrew, the word "Hamilton," the name "Hamilton" across the bridge?
It is. So this, this design consists of two separate walls. So the bridge is a low-lie concrete wall in the front, there's a larger wall behind it displaying the word "Hamilton." And the reason that they developed this offset was to add a little bit of depth and a silhouetting effect to the bridge.
Option three, please?
Sure. Option three, look to recall and celebrate Hamilton's industrial heritage, but at the same time bringing forward a more contemporary design. So the letters would be erected on a pedestal, and in behind would be a wall of self-weathering steel, air weathering steel, Corten steel, that would help accentuate the design. Again, in behind, you would have coniferous vegetation that would just frame the entire gateway.
And the red is why? Is that a painted red backdrop?
No, the red, that's just a steel. If you'll recall, the, the bridge at the top of the, well, the Lincoln Red Hill where the pedestrian bridge that goes across, that's a weathering steel.
Yeah, I know.
So over time, it just turns into a, what people like to call the beautiful red color, that would just kind of add some, some character.
So just on that, Andrew, and again, not being facetious, but, and I'm very proud of getting the money to build that bridge over the link, that pedestrian bridge, but I can't tell you, and Gary Moore had to help a number of my constituents to explain why that bridge looked like it was orange and rusted, and nobody understood this thing about it's some kind of weather resistant, and that's the way it has to be, councillor, because in the long run, it's less maintenance. And I can tell you, the average citizen and taxpayer just didn't buy the argument. But anyway, so you're saying that's going to be that type?
Being a structural guy myself, I totally agree.
Okay, thank you. And the last one, option four?
Option four, so there's a lot of similarities between option three and option four. You can see the letters and the pedestal are very similar. But what option four tried to bring to the table was recognizing that the city of Hamilton is unique. We do have the Ascarpin, we have the Low City, we have, we have the Coots. So what they were suggesting was that we could change the background at each location. So the image you see here before you would be using a group of small deciduous trees, but would they have explored as other options to be utilizing some sumac or as well as some wild colorful grasses? So just providing a different backdrop to the sign.
So Madam Deputy Mayor, Andrew, again, your recommendation, if it stands, the $230,000, is for the site at the 403 and 6, and which type?
Well, we would be following the 2008 public consultation process, which identified option four as the preferred design concept. We have had to make some slight refinements to suit the existing landscape, and the other suggestion that has been made is the use of coniferous vegetation, which was prominent in the other three options. The issue with deciduous vegetation is that for six, seven, eight months of the year at times, it is blank. And without having a formal background, a sign of that size, you would just lose it as you're driving by, it would never stand out. So staff are recommending coniferous vegetation that would help unite the two elements, make it clearly visible.
And Madam Deputy Mayor, Andrew, this sign at 403 and 6, this would be just before the ramp that goes up for 6? Help me explain that, explain that to me, please?
I'm gonna.
So as I'm traveling 403 into Hamilton?
You're not going to hear me.
Yes?
The Highway 6 interchange.
The Highway 6 that goes up towards Claps and Corners?
Yes.
Yes?
So you're traveling down 403, you start to go around.
That's near the harbor, then?
The harbor would be as you come around.
Okay, thank you very much, Andrew. Thanks, Madam Deputy Mayor.
Yes.
Councillor Ferguson, your motion? Okay, it was moved and seconded? All in favor?
Standing recorded.
Standing recorded vote, okay? All in favor?
Staff.
Okay, so you want to, we vote on the deferral first, Ida, clarify then, the referral? So we have to vote?
All of them are being deferred to the budget, except the one. So you're asking for the one to also go to the budget? Okay, I can't support that, Madam Chair.